President.
Counselor Thompson. Counselor Van Dremelin. Counselor McLeod.
Present.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
And Counselor Mickey said that she will not be attending tonight.
Thank you. Next on the night's agenda, item two is public comment. Public comment is a time for Albany residents to speak and for counselors to listen. The council won't discuss topics or make decisions during public comment, but will take the comments and requests under advisement. Speakers are limited to three minutes and must follow the council rules and observe the same standards of decorum. If unable to do so, they'll be asked to step down and take a seat in the audience for the rest of the meeting. When you get to the microphone, please give your name and state whether or not you live in Albany. No one signed up? Does anybody in council chambers like to speak to the council this afternoon? You gonna tell us about Greece? Thank you. Next, item three, street maintenance funding opinion research. Stacy Bell Castro and pages two through forty-eight in your packet.
Good afternoon. And since we have a new counselor on the dais, I thought I would introduce myself. I'm Stacy Bell Castro. I work in the public works department and my position is city engineer. So for this presentation, council is going to hear from John Horvich with DHM Research. He's going to provide an overview of opinion research that was completed recently this year in March and April to understand the community's views on Albany's streets and then also gauge support for additional funding mechanisms to maintain Albany's streets. We have been working with Conser and DHM for, I guess, the past year to do this work. But before turning it over to John, I did want to share that we have added an interim check-in to the June twenty-third council work session. So we had discussed a draft schedule with council in February of this year that would allow for consideration of a local gas tax on the November ballot. And it's still up for consideration. But one of the main takeaways from the community surveys is that we do need a robust education and campaign in order to give a fuel tax the best chance at being successful if it's placed on a ballot. We have started outreach efforts. We have spoken to, I think it's the Albany Rotary Club, and are scheduling additional meetings. However, we are concerned that if a gas tax is placed on the ballot in July, it just would not provide enough time to have a strategic campaign to the community. As public employees, once the ballot is, the gas tax is placed on the ballot, we would not be able to campaign and support. So looking ahead to the June twenty-third work session, we want to discuss with council if consideration of the local gas tax should be moved to an election in 2026 in order to have a more robust education and campaign. Also, by that meeting, we should have a better understanding of the final structure of House Bill 2025. I think the bill was just released like a couple hours ago, and it will result in additional funding to Albany that could be used to maintain streets. So we'll want to look at that and then also recalculate the funding gap before we move forward. And then also, we will provide council with an update on, there has been work that's been happening in the background to develop the framework and structure for a street maintenance fee. And so we'll provide council with an update at the June twenty-third meeting on that as well. So with that, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to John.
Can I ask a question before you? So if we're looking at possibly moving into 2026, the gas tax to fuel tax, can we coordinate with our taxing partners to see what they have on the ballot as well?
Yep.
So we're not tripping over each other and causing problems for each other? I appreciate that.
Yep.
Can I hear you?
Try unmuting, how about that?
Better, thank you.
Yeah, I bet. All right, I'm gonna try to share my screen here.
Got an echo.
Is that echo, where is that echo coming from? Anybody know?
We're not seeing the slideshow, we're seeing the bones behind it. There we go.
There we go, all right. Folks see the screen, people can hear me?
Yes.
All right, thank you so much, mayor, city council, staff. Appreciate an opportunity to share with you what we've been hearing from your committee members over the course of the last months, but even the last couple of years. I'm gonna walk through this deck here. I understand that it's been shared with you. I'm gonna go through all of it and try to be available for questions. Of course, if I'm not being clear, if I could answer technical detail, please stop me along the way. I want to make sure that you are able to keep along with what I'm trying to communicate. I do have a couple colleagues here with me. I want to particularly acknowledge Lane Cooper. Lane and I worked hand in hand throughout this research process, and he's here to help us answer any questions as well. My colleague Megan Moore is here as well. All right, I'm gonna go through this. First, just to recap, we've had an opportunity to do four bits of research with your community. And so, sorry, the top, the most recent, completed a survey. Pretty robust survey. In total, it took sixteen minutes to complete. We talked to three hundred randomly selected voters in the community. We really focused in on the local gas tax and street maintenance fee. We also, in March of 2025, we did some focus groups. So two focus groups. These are in-depth conversations, two-hour conversations, again with what we defined as likely voters. You know, folks who are more likely to turn up in a smaller turnout election, like a special election or a primary election. And these were to ask people not just what they think about various transportation funding ideas, but what do they know? What questions do they have? What are their concerns? To try to get at just, not just the what, like we do in a survey, but dig into the why as well. And then in 2024, we also completed a survey and some focus groups as well as there was beginning planning back then too. I'm gonna walk through the results primarily focusing on the most recent research. And then again, please stop me if there's any questions along the way.
Excuse me for a second. Can you turn your volume up just a little bit?
I don't know how one does that. I can try, let me.
That might be on our end.
Okay.
Be on our end?
I think it would be on our end.
Matthew, can you, is that back there? Thank you.
I will, I will try to speak up and articulate.
That's better, no, he fixed it, it's better.
Great, 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 all right. So I'm gonna begin by talking about the street maintenance fee, although most of my conversation and data here are gonna be about the potential gas tax. But we did ask for the street maintenance fee, and that informed some of our thinking about how people are thinking about funding as well as some of their concerns around affordability, particularly for those who are lower income. And so this comes from the survey. We tried in this survey to give people context, you know, why this is coming up, what the needs are, what it would cost. And so there is this long description on the side. Albany does not currently have a gas tax. Almost Albany's share of local property taxes is used to fund local police and fire services. The majority of the city's funding for road repair and maintenance comes from its share of the state federal gas taxes, which have not increased in ten years. Oh, excuse me, this is about the gas tax. So I apologize. Language here is about the gas tax. But we did ask for a street maintenance fee. I apologize for that. That should be text for a street maintenance fee. The important thing here in this slide is that the street maintenance fee, it starts with pre-low levels for twenty-nine percent. So they support a street maintenance fee sixty-five percent. So that they oppose the street maintenance fee. I'm gonna give you some more context here in a second. But this doesn't have to go to the voters. This is not, this is a check-in with the community, not something necessarily that we need to be measuring whether or not there's fifty percent plus one support out there. In the survey, we did give people some more information about a street maintenance fee. You know, sometimes when you provide people some more context, some purposes for it, the benefits for something, you'll see support increase or change. And you know, it did a little bit. We went from twenty-nine percent, you know, we sort of gave people very little information and then gave people a little bit more information about the hows and whys. You know, went up to thirty-four percent. But these, that's not a big change. The opposition went from sixty-five percent to sixty-three percent. So essentially, you know, folks aren't anxious for a street maintenance fee. But there is, there's some things we can learn about why. And so these are some comments that come from our focus groups. So in our focus groups, we also ask people about a street maintenance fee and, you know, why they might support it, but also why might oppose it or what their concerns are. And on the left here, just sort of a bucket of comments we heard in our focus groups about, you know, utility bills are too high. People have experienced inflation, cost of living increases. In particular, these fixed costs that people have or these regular ongoing costs that people have are a source of stress. So utility bills are already too high. Yeah, it sounds like the better idea than hitting everybody with utility fees that are already high enough to make you clench. I would somewhat oppose because utility bills are already one of our biggest expenses and that there are too many random fees on our utility bills. And that might not actually be true about, you know, city of Albany utility bills. But sometimes people are thinking about their cellphone or their cable bills and, you know, additional fees on that. So it gives people a little bit of a hesitation. And then there's just, you know, cost of living stuff. Utilities are necessary to where driving is a privilege. Sort of this idea, as persons make this comparing contrast between a street maintenance fee and a gas tax, it affects the kids and elderly. If you can't afford to heat your home or have water in your home because the fee's getting added on, you're hurting the community. That was just one person's take. Another person said taking more taxes and fees from people is not the answer. They're struggling as it is. And then the main issue for me is that it's another way of raising cost of living. These little fees that are things that surprise people when they're trying to figure out, can I afford to live here? So you know, we have these sorts of concerns. I don't think it's particularly surprising. But, you know, people are generally concerned about the cost of living, in particular when it comes to something like their regular utility bills. Now, but because people are concerned about cost of living, there is a little bit of insight that we can glean from this question. We did ask people, hey, what do you think is the better way to, if there were gonna be a street maintenance fee, this is from the survey, what is a better approach? Should we charge low-income residents reduced fees? And we said that this would reduce the financial burden for those who are struggling to get by, but it raised less revenue for street maintenance and be harder for the city to administer. So we're telling folks, hey, this might be a benefit for people who are lower income, but it comes with some costs too. It's gonna be harder to administer, not gonna raise enough, as much money. Or would you prefer we charge all residents the same fee regardless of their income? This would raise more revenue for street maintenance and be easier for the city to administer. Now, given that previous slide about concerns about cost of living, about concerns about affordability of the utility bill, maybe it's not a surprise. But here we see, hey, there is a strong lean towards looking at opportunities, ways to perhaps, whether it's tiered in or phased in or low-income discounts, whatever the program might be. So we can begin to see like that there's this concern, but maybe people thinking about solutions. So that's the street maintenance fee. Now I'm gonna really focus in on the gas tax because this is something that would require a vote of people. So this is some data that comes from the focus groups. And so we have charts on the left there and some quotes there on the right. The charts are come from a question where we asked our participants, and these are randomly selected folks across the community. And one of the things we asked was just where the heck does funding for street maintenance come from? In specifically in the city of Albany. And across our participants, a majority said, and clearly more than anything else, that it comes from property taxes. So fifteen of our twenty-two participants said property taxes was where funding comes from. Another five just said taxes in general without being able to say anything in particular. Business taxes and fees, state funding, and then the gas tax, city taxes, income taxes down below. And then we have these quotes on the right that I think provide the context here. There's just a lot of uncertainty, lack of knowledge about how street maintenance funding works in municipalities in Oregon and Albany in particular. So on the right here are some quotes. A city gas tax is one of the things I assumed that we were already doing. I'd be curious to know what tax base that they're using for maintenance streets and roads. Another person said, I don't know the specifics, but I know there's a high tax. I think it's higher in Albany than other cities, judging from the price of gases. This is, said, not only do we have a gas tax in Albany, but it's higher than other places. And then another person said, I wasn't aware that there was no gas tax in Albany. That's dumb in the first place. If we had it for years and years, we wouldn't be in this situation. So here, you know, people's reaction to whether it's a gas tax or a street maintenance fee are rooted in what they believe is true. And here we're seeing a couple of things. One, they think that the property tax is paying for maintenance. So there's a disconnect there. And there's a wide assumption among our participants in these focus groups that Albany already had a gas tax. And so when you begin these conversations, it really becomes aware that in order to be successful with the ballot, you know, taking time to communicate to the community about what is true and what is needed is going to, a real effort's gonna need to be put into that. So here is the gas tax numbers. And here is this gas tax, so information that we provided in our survey. It said Albany currently does not have a gas tax. Almost all of Albany's share of local property taxes is used to fund local police and fire services. The majority of the city's funding for road repair and maintenance comes from its share of the state and federal gas taxes, which have not increased in years. Due to the declining state and federal gas tax revenue increasing and increasing construction costs, Albany has not been able to maintain city streets to a level the community expects. This new gas tax would create a temporary program dedicated to street maintenance repair in Albany. It is estimated to raise four million dollars per year. The gas tax will expire in five years unless it's renewed by voters. And then we said Albany has a hundred ninety miles of city streets. More than sixty miles are rated in poor condition relative to the gas tax would bring many of these streets as possible to at least fair condition. So here we're trying to tell people, what is the situation? What is the cost gonna be? What is the benefit gonna be? And accountability in a way too with the expiration in five years. So we asked about this several times in the survey. First, we gave people just very little information. And then we gave them this more full-throated bit of information. It started at forty-one percent. And then we gave people this more robust set of information. It went up to forty-eight percent. Opposition went from fifty-five to forty-eight. Now, compare that to where the street maintenance fee, it's higher level of support than the street maintenance fee. And we're kind of bumping up with that informed test to the fifty percent mark. All right, so then we gave people a number of different statements about the benefits or the positive sort of results of the gas tax. So they're not shown here. But you know, we gave people several messaging sorts of statements. We communicated different bits and pieces about how a gas tax might benefit the community. And then after all of that, we asked folks again, hey, so now that you've considered this information, these sort of statements where you add on the gas tax. And then we get to fifty-one percent support, forty-eight percent opposition. So now, you know, we're got a little bit more support out there than opposition. This tells me a couple of things. One, it tells me it is possible to move people towards being supportive of the gas tax. Two, it tells me without a robust public communication campaign, a gas tax is unlikely to be successful. We're starting below fifty percent. We can move, we move people ten percentage points on the yes side in just the time we had them in the survey. So movement is possible. But we're not starting from a high level of support that we could take anything for granted. This would be a real effort. It would take real engagement over a sustained period of time. In the focus groups, just to give you some context of how people thought through this, you know, on the left here are sort of some initial ideas that people suggested about a gas tax, and then they learned more. And then here is what they said later on. So just a few examples. One person was, well, I didn't want to raise taxes. I hear that three-letter word, I'm instantly opposed, right? But here's on the right side, the logic behind it is so obvious that it sweetened the pot. I actually said, let's vote for some money to be sent if that's all we have to do. Otherwise, our cars are gonna fall into these things and actually need to be repaired. This was somebody who's really concerned about the quality of streets in Albany and worried about the maintenance costs he was paying to keep his car up on poor quality streets. Another person said, I'm a conservative, I don't like raising taxes at all. But I was shocked at some of the numbers that you gave me. Even if it had to be a fifty-cent tax on gas, I'm cool with that. If that means we're actually gonna have decent roads. And a third person said, I'm more conservative than other things when it comes to finances. I'm not a big proponent of taxes in general. But I'd be in favor of a city gas tax. A lot of cities do it. A lot of counties do have it. I think it's a missed opportunity. These are all people who discovered throughout the focus group process a few things. One, the funding challenges that Albany has. Two, real clarity about the amount of roads that are in poor shape and need to be repaired. And third, like what they thought through, how much a gas tax would actually cost them in reality. A lot of people had overestimated what the actual personal impact would be and a realization that other communities are using this mechanism to help pay for their roads. And so we asked where we got the movement in the focus groups. In the survey, we can look at some of the demographic groups that changed. And so here we have that, where people started, that's that initial test row. Where people ended, that's that final test row. And then we just, the calculation of the difference between these two. And then we call out some different demographic groups that moved. And so our young folks, they improved eighteen percentage points in favor of a gas tax. Our eighteen-to-twenty-nine-year-olds. Women, they moved fourteen percentage points in favor of the gas tax. Those with middle and higher incomes moved more than those with lower incomes. Perhaps that's not a surprise because they're more likely to think that they can afford it. And all the Republicans were not supportive at the end. Only thirty-two percent of Republicans supported the gas tax in the final test. They did move eleven percentage points. So there was movement even among Republicans as well. We did in our survey ask folks, you know, this trade-off. And here it is a little bit less clarity, so a little bit less clear about where the community is at. We said, what would your preference be? And the blue here, would you prefer a ten-cent gas tax that raises four million dollars per year and allows Albany to fix streets more quickly? So a higher tax, but quicker results. Or would you prefer a five-cent gas tax, it's green, that raises two million dollars per year, but will take Albany longer to fix city streets? So lower tax, but longer in terms of seeing the benefit. And here, forty-one percent were for the ten cent. You know, that's more than the thirty-one percent with the five cent. But no, no group had a majority. And then a big chunk, twenty percent, so gosh, I'm not real sure that I know. This was more clear. We also asked people to consider this sort of voter accountability. This phase out or this time period for the gas tax. So here, what would your preference be? The blue here, and the gas tax in five years unless it's renewed by voters. This ensures that voters can decide whether the gas test is effective, but makes long-term planning more difficult. So we tried to give people, you know, the pro and the con on that. And then the green, make the gas tax permanent. This would prevent voters from evaluating effectiveness, but make long-term planning possible. We could quibble with the way that we phrase these, and that would be fair. But I think that the broader takeaway is that voters would, are gonna be more attracted, more likely to support a gas tax at the ballot if there's a commitment from the city that they're gonna have an opportunity to weigh in again in the future. And, you know, we've seen that in other communities. For example, DHM and I have worked with the city of Portland on their initial gas tax and then the renewals. And having that phase out or that opportunity to weigh in again on voters is one of the key things that have made that successful, even with the trade-off of not being able to as easily do that long-term, that long-term planning. Just to give you a sense of just the politics of this, the voter politics of this, we divided our survey participants into three groups. What one group we call our strong supporters. Those were the ones who said, I'm certain to vote yes on supporting the gas tax. That's the green or the bluish-green color. And then the yellow color, what we call our swing voters. Those are the ones who said, I'm leaning out to vote yes, I'm leaning to vote no, I'm not sure. So they weren't certain yes, certain no, maybe in the middle a little bit there, maybe could be moved. And then our strong opposers, these are the folks who said they're certain to vote no. If you think about these three groups, the smallest, we've been realistic with ourselves, the smallest is the strong supporters at twenty-four percent. Our swing voters are thirty-five percent. That means twenty-four percent of all the people we talked to, twenty-four percent of likely voters are strong supporters. Another thirty-five percent are swing voters. And that's opportunity to get the swing voters over to yes. And then, you know, we have forty-one percent who are strongly opposed. And those are gonna be ones that are pretty difficult to move. You know, this doesn't promise anything, but it suggests that sort of feeling of possibility is probably close to sixty percent. You know, we're not dealing with an issue, an electorate that's gonna pass a gas tax at seventy-five, eighty percent, you know? Everything worked well into the future, you know, a ceiling might be sixty percent. But a sixty is more than fifty, and that's what's necessary to get to yes. If you want to think about who these, who's in these groups, again, so if we look at the total column, twenty-four percent of our voters were strong supporters, thirty-five percent were swing voters, forty-one percent were strong opposers. Then if you look at the columns for the individual demographics, maybe the easiest to think about is party. Our Democrats, thirty-five percent strong supporters versus fourteen percent of Republicans. Makes sense. So Democrats, thirty-five percent strong supporters, forty-seven percent swing voters. When Republicans, sixty percent are strong opposers. Again, sort of makes sense. Age is interesting, and this is consistent with lots of other data we've seen on all sorts of issues. Our oldest voters are sixty-five-plus voters. That was the largest group of strong supporters. It's that middle-aged group, sort of those, you know, Gen Xers and older millennials who were the most in opposition. And we see that through lots and lots and lots of different issues. If you just look at party registration even, you know, our sixty-five-plus group tends to actually lean relatively more Democratic. So that most conservative group tends to be that middle-aged group. Lots of reasons for that, we could talk about another time, but that these patterns are pretty consistent with that.
Ask a question?
Yes, sir.
So on this slide, you've left me out of it.
Yeah.
Fifty-five to, you know, to sixty-four.
Oh, that should say forty-five to sixty-four. I apologize.
Okay. I'm like, wait a minute now.
That's a typo.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for calling that out.
There's a lot of folks in this room that fit that box.
Yes, you were in that, in that forty-five to sixty-four column, which should be.
Thank you.
My apologies. Um, this is more for your information. I'm not gonna really spend time on it right now. You could look at it more, but there was a desire to just help you think through what the different electorates are like for election types. There are many variables, you can look at this. The two that have the most sort of push and pull, that move the most from election to election are party and age. And just the way to read this, if you're looking at that column under the 2025 November special, if you look at, say, eighteen to twenty-nine, that row, we would expect, based upon what current registration, votes have passed, turnout, we would expect about eight percent of the electorate to be eighteen, twenty-nine-year-olds in a November twenty-twenty special election. We would expect about forty-six percent of the electorate to be sixty-five or older. Now compare that to the 2026 general election. Just for, say, sixty-five-year-olds, it'd be, we expect it to be thirty-two percent. The other thing to look at is party. So if we, again, take that 2025 November special, if you look at that row for non-affiliated, that's the NAV, and other, that's your constitution party, your green party, we could kind of lump them all together. But in the November twenty-twenty-five special election, we would expect about twenty percent of the turnout to be non-affiliated or other voters. And we'd expect in the November twenty-twenty-six general election to be about thirty. These two things correlate with each other. That is, younger people are much more likely to be registered as non-affiliated, so that's part of it. And just if you are a registered Democrat or you're a registered Republican, that's a sign that you are more interested in politics, more invested in politics, tend to vote. a sign that you are more interested in politics, more invested in politics, tend to vote more than non-affiliated voters. And so those general elections, those bigger turnout elections, they tend to be a little bit younger, and they tend to have a higher share of non-affiliated voters. Again, that's going to be real important as you sort of think about, like, this slide and this slide. The electorate is different in these elections, as we're thinking about timing. And then, and just some overall funding support types of questions. We did, in our survey, ask people to put themselves into one of three categories with that sort of best fit their thinking. The dark green is, you know, should Albany increase taxes and fees to fund city streets maintenance fully, you know? So it's, we're going to get the full benefit, so that's going to cost some more. The lighter green, increase some taxes or fees to fund the city streets maintenance needs partially. If you add up the dark green and the light green, 26% and 29%, you get to 55%. That's 55% of voters in Albany said, not necessarily a particular mechanism, not necessarily a particular amount, but 55% said, I'm open to some increased revenue to meet this transportation maintenance need that we have in the city. That's a majority. There's 34% who said, do not increase taxes or fees, do not provide additional funding for street maintenance. So if we look at the kind of questions we've asked, we look at our strong opposers, we look at this slice of that, do not increase taxes or fees, you know, it's probably about a third to 40% of the voters just aren't going to move, we're just not going to get them. And there's probably about 25% or so of the electorate who's just all on board, ready to go. And then you probably have, you know, another 33 to 40% who are movable. And then, you know, going forward, it's being able to communicate to that group, educate them, persuade them to try to get to that 50% plus one number that we need. And if you sort of think about this by demographic groups, again, the dark green is the increased taxes and fees fully, the lighter green is increased taxes and fees partially, you can sort of see how this breaks up. Our Democrats, you know, they have the most green at the top there, our young folks have the second-most green. And then, you know, again, that 65-plus, that older group is actually relatively more supportive of increased taxes and fees, and our middle-aged group, that 30, 44, and 45 to 64. And then, as anticipated, as we expect, Republicans are the least, or the most likely to say, do not increase taxes or fees, that's why the Republicans. And then finally, we asked in the survey, would you be more supportive, less supportive, or would it make no difference to you if the city required a public plan showing which streets will be fixed and report on how the funds are being spent? So 48% said, yeah, I'd be more supportive if that were the case. 40%, well, it doesn't make a difference to me. And then 9%, you know, the 9% should be less supportive, maybe we can think of why. But here, this is another accountability measure. We sort of see what that five-year re-ask that was strongly sort of grabbed onto by voters in Albany, here we see a plurality said to be more supportive if there is, and reports and public plan. So these accountability measures, I think, are key to gathering community support. With that, I will stop and be happy to address any questions you have or turn back the meeting.
Counsel, any questions?
Other items.
Counsel, any questions?
I'm just still perplexed over providing a report on what roads would be fixed, that doesn't make a difference, or they don't care, the 9%. I'm trying to, any idea, John, why?
Most people aren't, I mean, just the truth is, well, here's an example, just out of context example, but just to try to make the point. When we ask people whether it happens to be Governor Kotek right now, but we asked Oregonians today, you know, if you have a positive or negative opinion about the governor, about a quarter of people said, I don't know who she is. Now, in our focus groups, we heard folks had no idea of how transportation was funded. Many of them thought it was property taxes or had a gas tax. I think what a lot of people are saying to this is, I am counting on my elected officials, my professional staff, to be thoughtful making these decisions, and I don't want to be too engaged with that. I think when they're saying it doesn't make a difference, they're saying, you, you city leaders, you're the ones who I'm putting in charge to make the decisions, and I just don't want to be too engaged with them.
Okay.
Counselor.
Thank you. I think that for too long, we've had people that have not wanted to do the hard work and have been too afraid to bring funding to street maintenance. And I think that however we do this, we need to get these streets fixed. So I just wanted to thank you for your presentation and for the information that you've gathered. And, yeah, however we do this, we need to fix the streets, so.
We work for other communities on transportation funding. It's hard, and it doesn't always succeed. It is possible.
Counselors, Counsel Thompson.
This might be more for staff. There's talk at the state level of increasing their gas tax. Could that, could increase from the state be used on the residential streets, or is that strictly confined to the major streets?
The state gas tax isn't restricted, so we should know more by the June 23 meeting, what the House Bill 2025 ends up looking like, and have an estimate on how much additional revenue Albany would see. And unlike the federal gas tax, the state gas tax can be spent on local streets.
Okay. Great question. Counsel Van Gembleman? Counsel Smith?
I agree with the notion of postponing a gas tax vote until we see what House Bill 2025 is going to do, what effect that will have. Because the proposed change in the gas tax and in vehicle registration fees would have a substantial effect on cities and counties. The amount that we're already getting would be a lot more.
And for me, as I stated, I really would, I know Kayla, our WCD manager's been working on a calendar of what Lynn County's doing, what we're doing, what the school district's doing. So if we had an idea, we can better slot, if we do go to the voters, we don't want to take from them to feed our, you know, to take care of the city, because they have needs as well. So if Kayla can flush that out better for us, we can have an idea of what the county's planning, the city's planning, with Benton County is also involved in this as well. So having a calendar that counsel can use as a tool to make decisions on timing would be great. But your presentation's fantastic. I haven't looked at this many statistics since I was in college, so I was like, oh my God. So I do appreciate the detail. I did have a question about the older demographic, 65-plus. So how many people in the, can you tell me how many people were in the pool of surveyed people that were in that range?
We can. And Lane, are you able to pull that up for us quickly?
Yeah, so we had a total of 78 out of 300. It's about, let me look at that. I can't do that math off the top of my head, John, if you can, but a little under 10%, maybe?
Okay.
20, 26%.
Closer, closer. More than 20%. It's consistent with the registered voter population of the city of Albany.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate that. You know, the councils have anything else?
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes, please.
I know this may not be in your wheelhouse, but given the amount of room that has to be made up in terms of educating people, what would you say would be a realistic timeframe for conducting that kind of an educational campaign?
You're correct, that is not, that is not my expertise, that would be more concert's expertise, and so it's a good, excellent question to follow up with them. So just based upon my experience, I would say, looking at, it is a lot of things I don't know. You know, staff capacity, other issues that are happening in Albany right now, so this is just a total outsider. I would say, if you wanted to put something on the ballot, I'm just going to say, in May of 2026. And I'm just sort of picking that. This now is the time to be building up that robust communication, community outreach plan to be successful a year from now. Doesn't answer your question directly, but you are definitely not starting too early, you're not starting too late. I mean, I would be, at this point, it's not my decision to make, but it would be very challenging to do something, say, in November 2025.
Even though the demographics look a little bit better with the amount of voters that might turn out for a November race, you would suggest me?
You're starting at 41%, and we did see movement to 51. There's a lot of lack of awareness about how transportation is funded in Albany, we certainly saw them in focus groups. We saw people really move towards support of a gas tax in the focus groups. That was when we had two hours of thoughtful conversation to be able to get them, we weren't trying to get them there, but they got there themselves. There's also, if, I will just say, I don't know how the legislative decisions are going to affect public sentiment around additional local funding, so this is an X-factor. I just know it's really hard to gather people's attention and to educate folks. And, you know, between now and November would be, I don't want to say it's impossible, because lots of things are possible.
The monumental ask, though.
But it'd be a challenge.
So one of the things I did like about it is the five-year re-ask, right? Going back to public safety levy, we went on a year early and got it approved, and so I liked that piece of it, and I think people will feel better knowing that this is going to end versus this is forever. But I think people throw their hands up, it was forever, but I think the five-year, what do you think of the five-year?
I like it, and I think that the polling is strong for the voter accountability piece.
Counsel McCloud?
I also like having it renewed in five years, and I think that if we do have it, with the option of being renewed in five years, we would be able to have a higher percentage, I'm sorry, a higher tax rather than a lower tax. If it is something that has to be renewed, we would be able to get the streets fixed sooner rather than later. If it was up for the five-year renewal and we could have the higher tax.
Counsel Nudazor?
What I'm curious about, so within five years, what could be accomplished before we go out for bid? I like the five-year, I think it's a great way to build trust and say, and show like, hey, we promise, like, this is going towards fixing our streets. I just want to know, like.
They need to see the streets.
What can we show people and say, hey, we want to renew this?
Yeah, we'll bring that information back to the June 23 meeting, we can estimate what revenue different gas tax levels would bring, and then we know we can estimate how many blocks or miles a street we would be able to rehabilitate with the money per year.
Okay.
Yeah, because if we're going to renew something like this, I'd love to be able to.
What's your call, Counsel? Sorry, Counsel Van Gembleman?
I'd love to be able to say, like, hey, look what we did, let's renew this and do more.
Thompson?
No, I just agree with all that's been said, and I think this is getting into, we don't have to make that decision tonight. I think we're all pointing towards the June 23 meeting. And I just, I'd be curious what past, 2016, 2017, there was a large transportation bill from the state, and it improved to some degree. I just, I don't, after years of pushing, kicking the can down the road, as we've said many times, previous councils, I don't want to get too hung up on if the state can bail us out here now. I think there's some, I'm really excited to make a strong effort at this, in this city, however it ends up. I think it's fair to bring something to the voters in a significant way, just agreeing with what Counsel McCloud said. They just haven't done it in a robust way, and I really want to, and I don't want to get hung up on trying to prime it for the best moment in time. You know, if we end up doing the May of 2026, you know, if we have to, we have to, but then we get into partisan primary election, and, you know, anyway, I just, I'm just, there's a new council here, and there's a new sentiment to try to tackle this, whether it is successful or not. I think that's the most important thing.
Thank you, Counsel. Okay, is there any other questions or comments?
One comment.
Counsel Smith?
To put something on the ballot for this November, at this point in the calendar year, would give us a very similar timeline to the last gas tax vote.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate the work. So we're going to hear back on the 23rd on the House Bill 2025, and also some ideas as far as what Counsel Newton just mentioned, Nudazor just mentioned. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next on your agenda tonight is stormwater in lieu of franchise fee. Robert Edmonds, pages 49 to 51 in your packet.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. So with this agenda item, we are discussing whether to establish an in lieu of stormwater franchise fee. I'm assuming counsel knows the basics of franchise fees, but just quickly, let me just kind of add a little bit of context. Franchise fees are charged to private utility companies for their impact on the publicly-owned right-of-way. And in Albany, those fees are set at 7% with receipts being deposited into the general fund. So let me move to 1999, get back a little bit. At that point, city council expanded the franchise fees to include publicly-owned utilities, basically for the water and the wastewater system. At that point, they initiated, and what we call an in lieu of franchise fee, where we, at that point, they charged 7% of the revenue for those utilities, and that franchise fee went into the street utility fund. So what we are discussing tonight is if council would like to move forward with a stormwater utility in lieu of franchise fee, similar to what is in place for the water and the wastewater utility. We are proposing, if council would like to move forward with that fee, that that fee would be set at 7%, which is similar to the private, which is actually the same as a private franchise, and the same as the in lieu of franchise for water and wastewater system. And that 7% in lieu of franchise fee would go into the street fund and help fund street We are estimating that that fee would generate about $340,000 a year into the street fund from the stormwater utility.
Counsel.
Can I ask any questions?
Counselors, any questions? Counsel Nudazor?
Sure. Yeah, can I make sure I'm understanding things correctly? I want to make sure that I know that this would come out of, like, the existing stormwater fund, it isn't directly built, it's a new charge to residents, so residents shouldn't expect to see their bill go up, correct?
Correct, correct. It wouldn't be an additional charge to the wastewater utility, it would just come out of the existing waste, stormwater utility revenue.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Van Gembleman?
Yeah, so I'm just trying to understand, similar to the question, so this 7%, it already exists within the stormwater budget, yes?
Correct, correct.
So what makes it thus that that 7% of the budget is able to be reallocated? Like, what is it being used for currently? Does it just go to reserves? Like, what does that look like?
We anticipated these, we anticipated this when we are setting and establishing the stormwater rate increases over time. We anticipated that 7% of that revenue would, that there would be an in lieu of franchise fee established, and that would go into the street fund. So we kind of had that in mind.
So it's essentially already soft-budgeted for this already?
Correct, and it's also, as anticipated, that in the city's budget, that revenue would be shown in the street fund.
Okay. And then, are you able to provide any context for why an in lieu of franchise fee was not established for stormwater at the same time as wastewater and water?
Good question. The stormwater utility is a relatively new utility. It was established in 2017. It was established in two thousand seventeen. So right now, revenues are just generating enough that we thought it was timely to, to initiate the, the in lieu of franchise fee.
Excellent, thank you very much.
You know, the counselors, Counselor McLeod?
Uh, my questions have already been answered, thank you.
Counselor Smith, you have anything? Counselor Newton Azor? Counselor Thompson? Thank you very much. It looks like we have a resolution. You want to do this on Wednesday or?
Right, yeah, good. So with, you know, it sounds like there's a favorable opinion. So we'll come back to Wednesday's council meeting with a, this would be an ordinance amending the Albany Municipal Code to add that language in and so on.
So will be a public hearing and everything going with that?
Actually, there's not a public hearing required for this. So would, would not be a public hearing.
Thank you. Next is storm drainage SDC phase-in step. Robert Edmonds, fifty-two to fifty-four in your packet.
All right, well, we are keeping with the stormwater theme with this agenda item. This one is talking about stormwater, storm drainage system development charges. As the stormwater utility, the stormwater system development charge is a relatively new SDC. It was established in late two thousand twenty-three. When it was established, Council at that time decided to phase in the SDC in five equal steps to help lessen the impact to development. So the, the first step occurred when the fee was initially charged, starting in January of twenty-four. So at this point, we are asking Council if you would like to initiate the second phase-in step. And if so, then that phase-in step would occur in July, this coming, July first is coming next month. So, and caveat to add that this, the, each phase-in step, we will come back to Council and ask for direction if we would like, Council would like us to initiate the next phase-in step. So, and that will happen each spring for a July first initiation date.
That's the next three years or next four years?
It'd be, if, if this one's approved, it'll be three more for a total of, total of five phase-in steps.
Council? Counselor McLeod?
So to be clear, is this something that will increase fees on residents' bills?
Only for, only for development. So it's not, it's not part of the stormwater utility. This would be, SDCs are charged to development as they occur, so.
Okay, so only new?
Only new, new construction.
New construction.
Residential, commercial, and industrial.
Perfect, thank you.
Counselor Newton Azor?
Are there any exemptions or reductions for, or credits maybe for any developments that include green infrastructure or low-impact storm, stormwater design?
Unfortunately, there's, there's not. I know there, there are some SDC work happening now that I'm not. Anyway, there's some things happening I'm not totally knowledgeable on, so I don't want to, don't want to speak to it, so, yeah.
How, I want to just make sure we got any feedback about, for many developments that are currently in process, that are, had some impacted, like, timelines or project costs?
As far as, oh, how this, how this next phase-in step?
Yeah, how the first phase gone, and then how the next phase?
Yeah, we, I haven't gotten that feedback. I can certainly check with Community Development.
Here comes our.
Here comes my boss.
Okay.
I had a question along those lines as well.
Just one clarification. The fee is based on the area of impervious service that's developed. So if, for instance, a commercial entity installed pervious asphalt instead of impervious asphalt, then it would affect their fee. So it's not a credit per se. It's just the way that the fee is, the system development charge is calculated is based on the actual square footage of impervious area. So within the utility bill, there are, there is the ability to get some credit for your monthly utility charge for commercial and industrial entities. Example, if you have a DEQ stormwater permit that's in good standing, you can qualify for a reduction of your monthly utility charge. So try to encourage that.
Can, just because I want to know, and I'm curious, can you walk us through how we're, how the impervious area is calculated on, like, a property?
It's measured by square footage, like, literally measured.
Literally just measured, okay.
Literally measured. And it, you know, when they bring their plans in, you know, it typically has all of that measurement in there. And so it's the roof, it's the building, you know, envelope itself, and whatever paved surface that you are creating counts. So if you use a technique that reduces the imperviousness of your development, then it helps you in the calculation of your.
What about, like, green roofs? Would that reduce it? I'm just curious.
I'm not sure if we have an option for green roofs. This now is getting in, out of my depth. Yeah, I mean, my roof is green sometimes accidentally. Yeah, I'm not sure if we have a green roof option. And we would probably need to have some discussion. I don't, I don't know if that exists, because we would need to talk about, like, how much does it actually absorb if it gets to a maximum, and then it still runs off, so.
And then maybe there's fertilizer in that runoff, that's then getting, you know.
Right, and we don't want that, so.
Okay.
Okay, I, thank you, I was just curious and.
Counselor Thompson, you have anything? Counselor Smith, you have a comment? Counselor Van Dremelin? Thank you. We'll see you Wednesday night again?
Sure.
Okay. Next on tonight's agenda is business from, let me make sure, business from the council. I'll start with, I'm going to let you go last, because this is your first day. So give it time, put your thoughts together. Counselor Thompson? Counselor Azor, Newton Azor?
I have a few things. So number one, I would love if we could have staff look into adding a stop sign at Twelfth and Elm, just to increase some safety. I know we got one up in, recently up in North Albany, but I know that that's a really big route. It's right down the street from Takina Elementary School, and a whole bunch of kids are hoofing it. And I'm wondering if maybe we can make next school year safer for kids to be walking to and from school. People will just hot dog it down Elm Street. And I just worry for, you know, my daughter walks to school, and unfortunately, because I'm a safety nut, usually she's walking with friends. We're trying to work on personal independence, but she walks with a very tall flag, because I worry about how tall some vehicles are. So I wanted to make sure she has that independence and is learning how to navigate things, but also trying to be as safe as possible. Number two, I wanted to shout out to Stacy Bel Castro, thank you. I've had a constituent I've been working with for the last few weeks. We've had some Knife River trucks going up into a community area that they aren't supposed to be in on those roads. And this constituent has been wonderful about taking photos and recording when things are going awry. And so thank you to staff for communicating with Knife River and with potentially, I believe, ODOT, to make sure that that's not happening. And then number three, this one's a little fun. So I know that our library just had the summer reading program kickoff, and I kind of want to cha, not kind of, I do. I want to challenge every single member of council to a summer read-off. So during the, during the reading, during the summer read-off program, reading program during, you know, the library, I want everyone to just, you know, scouts honor, write down how many books you read. And at the end of it, I'll present the certificate for most well-read city councillor, council member. And I'm, I already, I already know that Counselor Smith is going to give me a run for my money. Yeah, so I think that'd be fun, and I want to know if you guys are game for just a fun read-off.
I can't participate. July first through October fifteenth, I've got it certified every insurance carrier I have.
All right, audiobooks count, audiobooks count, you know?
I will try, but I just, I can't make any promises.
Okay, that's fine, and we just, we just know you might, you know, be.
I like the challenge, though.
All right, sounds good, okay, cool.
Counselor Smith?
I'm not sure I have anything this evening, maybe Wednesday.
Okay, Counselor, Counselor McLeod?
Thank you, sir. First of all, happy Pride Month, happy upcoming Father's Day and Juneteenth. Summer reading program, I was going to mention that as well. My daughter Ellie and I signed up for the summer reading program this past weekend, and we've already started. And I'm looking forward to reading all the books with, with my daughter. And we, we started with Shel Silverstein, Where the Sidewalk Ends. It's a book that my first-grade teacher gave me thirty-nine years ago, and we are using the same copy to, to read together with, with my daughter. And it's, it's just given me all the feels. So excited about that summer reading program. Also, congratulations to the graduates from West Albany High School and South Albany High School, as well as Lynn Benton Community College. Remember to register to vote if you have turned eighteen or will be eighteen before the next election, please register to vote. Also, recently, I took a tour of our city's parks with the Parks and Recs Director, Kim Ledain, and I wanted to thank her for that wonderful tour. We got to see, see the new, new parks that are, I, I'm sorry, the improvements that are being made to our parks. That was, that was insightful. Also, joined by Tammy Cockram from the Planning Commission. So thank you, thank you for joining us for that. Also attended Congresswoman Janelle Bynum's town hall here in Albany a couple days ago. That was, that was great to see her in action. And, and yeah, that's about it, thank you.
Thank you. So I did attend the council hall as well, so that was a great meeting with her, especially the elected officials meeting beforehand. A lot of great questions came out of that from the community, which I think was fantastic. So before the next city council meeting, I'll turn sixty. And I've another digit, a different digit at the front of my, my birthday is, is interesting. But I won't, won't get a chance to see every, all of you. But it's been an honor to serve with you. And so turning sixty, and it's going to be a big milestone for me. And I'm excited about coming up with the concert series is coming up in July. I'm excited, our break is coming up in July. So we're going to have a nice, what, three or four, was Peter, is it a four-week break or three-week?
Four weeks.
It's a four-week break. And then, so get some travels in, get some camping in, get, get some family in, and enjoy your time away from us, away from the, from the busyness of this. And then I'm looking forward to seeing you all Wednesday night. Counselor, excuse me, Peter, I'll turn it over to you now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to.
No, no, no.
Okay.
I did it through Counselor McGee, I'm not doing it right now. Counselor Van Dremelin?
It's all good. I don't have a ton that I'm bringing tonight, just because I'm excited to be here. Thank you all for being so welcoming, and, and to the city staff as well. Taken a, a tour recently of, of city services writ large with Kayla, the deputy city manager. That was great, getting to see some of the different facilities and departments. And I'm excited to continue to do that more in-depth, kind of along the lines of what Counselor McLeod was saying with the Parks Tour and, and other, other city departments as well. Along similar lines, I know that this is graduation time of year. And so the high school graduates get a lot of play, but also want to give a shout-out along similar lines to some of the middle school bands that mark, from Albany that marched over in the Strawberry Festival Parade this weekend. Those over there and. Honestly, the bands are my favorite part of any parade as a former band kid. But just the, the music programs in this city are, are amazing, and I love to see them involved in the community in ways like that. But thank you all for, for having me here and giving me the opportunity to serve our city.
Again, I apologize, it won't happen again, but thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Now turn to our city manager.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And on behalf of the staff, I'd like to welcome Counselor Van Dremelin to, to the diocese on its first evening. I just had one thing. When I went home from work about Thursday of last week, I noticed a fire engine in the neighborhood and smoke coming up from behind our house. And sure enough, there was a fire in the brush back there. It was extinguished quickly, effectively, by the fire department. As they showed up, they had to find their way back there, because it was in a very remote part along the railroad. But I, I bring that up only because today, this, this weekend and today has been very hot. The summer's going to be very hot, and the conditions are quickly going to get to be tinder-dry. And it's not too early to start being very careful about the potential for fire in neighborhoods. So I, I just want to remind anybody that might be listening about that, especially as the Fourth of July weekend starts coming up, starts approaching. And Mr. Mayor, we have an executive session, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Number eight on your agenda, recess to executive session. To consider, let me see, we're going to, where's the document? The city council will now meet in executive session to consider matters relating to the safety of the governing body, and public body staff, volunteers, and security of the public facilities and meeting spaces in accordance with ORS one nine-two dot six six zero subsection paragraph two dash O. Representatives of the news media and designated staff and other persons shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other participants must exit. Online audience members will now be moved into the waiting room. When the council returns to open session, staff will readmit you, admit those in the waiting room to the general meeting. In-person audience members must leave the council chambers and wait in the hallway. When the council returns to open session, staff will open the doors, and you will rejoin the meeting. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decisions will be made during executive sessions. I will now recess to executive session at five oh six P.M. convene the regular meeting at 5:27 PM. And with that, if there's nothing else, I'll return the meeting at 5:27 PM. Thank you, council.